Our timed item today, 2:30 PM. 6.9, consideration of presentation and update of the California Department of Insurance Overview and Safer From Wildfires Framework. And we have Darius Siod. Is that how I say your last name?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, great, thank you. So you came last May and did an initial presentation, and I know you've been going around the state to other counties and giving a similar presentation. So in last spring's chat, you said you were going to come back and bring us some updates and some more data that we were looking for. So I'll just turn it over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I think, you know, good afternoon and, you know, thank you for the opportunity and reaching out to us in a month. We don't have that big updates on Safer From Wildfire, little bit on that, few things on that, and also want to introduce you to our another, as we have been meeting with many of you throughout the state, as you said. So it is clear that all of us, that California is at an insurance crossroad. Next slide, please.
Oh, we're gonna get it up.
That's okay.
Great.
Could we do the next slide? Yes. So natural disasters and global inflation are creating stress on insurance market. We all know that. This is not just happening here. Every state is experiencing this, these factors. Increased cost for rebuilding, labor shortages, insurance companies is harder to find and cost clear, and at-risk increases. Insurance companies are protecting their obligations to current consumers and limiting new business. Next slide, please. So the property insurance market is changing quickly, also changing quickly. Even though many insurance companies are currently still selling homeowners' insurance, 12 insurance companies control 85% of the California insurance market. So since 2022, seven of the top 12 insurance groups have paused or restricted new business despite rate increases approved or pending with the Department of Insurance. So clearly, this is a problem. It is complex, global in nature, and affecting us here at home. Next slide, please. I really want you to look at this slide carefully because the slide shows that, shows you that seven out of these 12 insurance companies have either paused or restricted their new policies, even though most of, most have pending or approved rate increases, showing that the problem cannot be solved just by increasing prices. Next slide, please. So over the past 10 years, insurance companies have done far worse in California than nationally by any measure, and you can see that, you know, direct incurred loss ratio countrywide in California, direct underwriting profit countrywide in California, and direct return on network. If you, network, if you go in the end, you see that part. And this data is from NAIC. So during those years, California experienced nine out of 10 most devastating wildfires in our state's history. So as a result, we are faced with a tough question. Can consumers get insurance they need? And honestly, today, the answer is generally no. Because climate change impacts are accelerating, we need to take action that expand insurance availability. So how did we get there? Next slide, please. Since 2019, we have been consistently monitoring and analyzing the status and direction of insurance availability trends. The Fair Plan has doubled to 3% of the market, becoming the insurer of the first resort for many Californians, not the last resort, as it was designed to. You're all probably aware of it, that the California Fair Plan Association was established to meet the needs of California homeowners unable to find insurance in the traditional marketplace. The Fair Plan is not a state agency, nor it is a public entity. There is no public or taxpayer funding that goes into a Fair Plan. The Fair Plan is a syndicated fire insurance pool comprised of all insurers licensed to conduct property casualty business in California. So the Fair Plan was established by statute in August 1968 as an insurance placement facility. All licensed property casualty insurance, which right, basic property insurance, you know, like I said, are members of the Care Plan. And the Fair, Fair Plan issues policies on behalf of its member companies. Each member company participates in the profit, profits, losses, and expenses of the plan in direct proportion to its market share of business written in the state. So a growing Fair Plan is a problem because Fair Plan policyholders are required to pay more for less coverage. And concentrating the highest-risk properties under the Fair Plan increases the chance that it will be unable to afford a catastrophic disaster. So it's really important to understand at this point that if Fair Plan goes insolvent, insurance companies are on the hook for the unpaid Fair Plan losses. While this hasn't happened in nearly 30 years, the uncertainty is still driving insurance companies to further limit coverage to at-risk Californians. So as a direct result of growing risk concentration in California, the credit rate agency, AM Best, has downgraded outlooks for top 12 companies like State Farm, AAA, and Mercury. And there is a critical fact to know, unlike public utilities, because sometimes people compare insurance with public utilities, but unlike public utilities, which are required to provide coverage to all residents and businesses, under Prop 103, insurance companies can legally refuse to write insurance unless they are able to meet 100% of consumers' complaints, cover their expenses, and earn a fair return. You know, everyone is harmed if an insurance company goes insolvent because it cannot pay its claim, and we want to make sure that doesn't happen. So next slide, please. So reduce, to reduce the risk of major losses in the industry, the Department of Insurance, as I have, you know, talked about it in my previous presentation a month ago, that it is a three-step process system to protect your home surroundings, community, which in turn provides consumers with discounts and transparency about the risk rating. So this is, next slide, please. So this is protecting home or businesses, and we already have been, you know, I've talked about it, but I'll just go really fast on it. Class A fire-rated roof, enclosed E is fire-resistant vents, you know, multi-pane windows, and a minimum of six non-combustible vertical clearance at the bottom of the exterior surface of the structure. Next slide, please. And that's step two is immediate surroundings. Protect the immediate surroundings, clearing of the vegetation and debris under the deck, clearing of vegetation, debris, mulch stored, combustible materials, and any and all movable combustible material from within five feet of the building being evaluated. Incorporation of only non-combustible materials into the portion of any improvements to the property of BBE, which is situated within five feet, and removal of combustible structures, sheds, and other outbuildings from the immediate surroundings of the home. And then it comes to our third slide, next slide, please, our third step, which is to obtain a community-level mitigation designation. This will most probably likely to involve at least one, if not more. Local government agencies, community-level mitigation designations include FRRC by the Board of Forestry, and a Firewise USA site in good standing. So the Firewise program is a nationwide program created by National Fire Protection Association, and I'm proud to say that we have more than 700 Firewise USA with more forming, and it is an important part of California efforts to ensure communities are prepared against wildfire. Next slide, please. So the Fair Plan began, and this is an update from last time, the Fair Plan began offering insurance discount starting August 23rd. And CDI expects to have other companies, you know, approved by the end of the year, you know, which is coming up, so we are hoping for that. And the Fair Plan has offered a 10% discount on policies in the participating Firewise communities since May 2018. And remind you, Fair Plan is not under those Prop 103, but they are still doing that, and that's, credit goes to them. So now the Fair Plan is offering two more discounts, okay, which were approved, which we said that, you know, starting August 23rd. One for protecting the structure, and another one for protecting the immediate surroundings of the dwelling. So when applied, these discounts will reduce the wildfire portion of the policy premium by 10% and 5%, respectively. And depending on your level of wildfire risk, this can be a large component of your overall premium. So we do advise you to contact your broker to find out what this means for your premium, how to qualify, and when you could receive a discount. So we have received several concerns earlier this month, you know, from several insurance agents over the past few days, that it seems that they are having difficulties with the Fair Plan, new website, and policies that take, taking longer than usual, five to 10 days. So the department is aware of the program and is addressing it with the Fair Plan. At this time, we do not have any further information on it, but we are aware of the issue and will update you once we get that. If you go on the Fair Plan website, they also have increased the call volume, and because of the call volume, they have also temporarily extended their customer service hours from Monday through Friday to Saturday also. So I want you to know that part. And then additionally, another update is CDI and the Fair Plan reached an agreement to increase the commercial coverage limit to 20 million per location. So it has been effective since November 1st. So this addressed the greater needs of recreational youth camps, homeowners' association, wineries, and agriculture groups for additional coverage. And the business owner policy, which we call it BOP, limit increases to 20 million, and this is to take effect no later than December 14, that is, two days from today. So another thing I would like to discuss is that most people do not know that insurance companies assign a risk code to your home, you know? So it is important to get the risk code because if you know about your risk code, you can take action accordingly. So there was a question submitted by Johanna about what is the average, average insurance that a homeowner's pay in the Lake County? So basically, currently, insurance is, basically, we don't have that information because there are so many factors that, so many factors that the insurance company look into it. Right now, currently, insurance receives information on risk from private companies, and two of them are Fireline Score and CoreLogic. The three main factors that are considered are fuel, slope, and excess that goes into wildfire risk scores. Other factors may be considered, but those are three main factors. Currently, there is not a process by which a community can directly contact the risk modeling company to inform them that what they have done or not, but individual property owners may submit this information to their insurers. So the regulation, as I've talked about this before also, requires insurance company to give you the wildfire risk score for the property, for your property. They have to tell you how they created the score, what factors went into the score. So the, so the wildfire risk or classification must provide to you at the following times. When you apply for a new policy, within 15 days. Before you renew a policy, at least 45 days. Before you are non-renewed, at least 75 days. And when you complete mitigation on your property and request a revised score within 30 days. So by creating the right of appeal, the regulation is giving power to the consumer, and if you're not satisfied and you have, you know, then all that you need to do, please contact the department, and we will help you in any way possible. Next slide, please. It's important to understand that we are not starting from scratch because these actions build on changes the department has made since 2019, moving in the direction of more modern and resilient markets. We have moved forward on wildfire actions and are responding to climate change like never before. We are providing the department, we are proud the department is leading the way for our state and our nation. Next slide, please. So California's sustainable insurance strategy is a comprehensive plan to modernize our insurance market with three interlocking goals. One, making insurance available to Californians, creating a resilient insurance market, and then protecting consumers from climate change. Next slide, please. So here are the executive actions, okay, and reform, and reforms we are talking about. One, we will increase available, availability of insurance in wildfire distressed area. So using a prior approval rate authority, insurance company will write no less than 85% of homes and business in wildfire distressed area. This is a historic agreement between department and insurance companies. We will reverse the trend of a growing Fair Plan and closing the insurance gap. The department will define these distressed areas using a data-driven approach. The second important part of this plan is we will return Fair Plan policyholders, like our plan is, back to traditional insurance. Because with first priority given to hardened homes and business of following the Safer From Wildfire, so that will be the priority. The next important element of the plan directly addresses the climate crisis. The commissioner will introduce regulation to utilize forward-looking catastrophic model, prioritizing wildfire safety, mitigation, and transparency. So effectively addressing climate change requires new risk assessment strategies that keep insurance available. So forward-looking model must recognize the clear benefits of investments our governor and legislature are making in wildfire safety, including home hardening, fuel reduction, and prescribed fires. We have a clear template for how to do this now because of our experience with Safer From Wildfires regulation requiring insurance discount and increased transparency on wildfire risk scores. So we will take input from public and put the public's interest in safety and insurance access first, as we did in the process. So another important element that is there is stabilizing our market in the face of climate change. So you probably, some of you are aware of it, that we want, so want to explore alarm California only reinsurance costs. Reinsurance is a tool that many insurance companies are using to manage their climate risk and continue writing policies. We want to underscore that Californians will not pay the cost of hurricanes, fires, and flood across the nation and around the world. Under this agreement, companies wishing to use these new risk assessment tools must agree to increase and maintain then writing in the wildfire distressed area of our state, which meaning that that's 85% required. We just talked about increasing writing and removing people from the Fair Plan. So now turning to Fair Plan, we have talked about it. We will continue modernizing the Fair Plan by expanding commercial coverage limits to 20 million per structure. So this closes kind of coverage gap from HOA, affordable housing, and agri-business, which also have been having a hard time finding coverage. Next slide, please. So our sustainable insurance strategy is very new, okay? It just came out, is the result of meeting with California homeowners, business owners, fire chiefs, agents, realtors, homeowners' associations, summer camps, farmers, rancher, and many other consumers across the state. We have held meeting in all 58 counties since 2019, making sure we are taking everyone into account. This issue of insurance availability is imperative for everyone, and we will do our part to improve the market. Before moving to the next slide, I also want to address a few questions that were sent to me earlier, that what is the most up-to-date data on non-renewals? So our latest data available on our website is from 2021. Unfortunately, the 2020, 2022 data is not available until early next year, okay? And then what percentage of homeowners are on the Fair Plan in Lake County? We have the data again from 2021, and I'm going to put the, either I'm going to send the link to Johanna, or I'm going to put the link into our chat group, that you can go on our website and see that, but this data is, remind you, from 2021 because we don't have a data from 2022. And then there was a question about average cost, cost of, to insure a home within the county outside of the cities. We don't have an answer to that, for there are so many variables that goes into that. Sometimes even the home just next to it will have a different system of calculating the cost. So I just want to say that, and I will request for next slide, which is actually opening up the questions.
Okay, thank you.
I tried to go fast because I know I'm giving an update, and I don't want to take too much time of yours, all of yours.
Oh, no, wonderful. Appreciate you coming back. Yeah, I guess we'll be looking forward next year to that data that we were hoping to get. So what is the plan to remove the 85% of the policyholders from the Fair Plan back into the market, and how long is that supposed to take?
So these, this is so new to us because it was just introduced in September. So what, right now, there is so many things that will go into that. The whole idea is that if we do that 85%, you know, give the, you know, they're writing in the distressed area, that will help them in, that will help them in, you know, the incentive that they can use the risk modeling moving forward. So what that means is basically that when we get to that point, when 85% minimum threshold takes effect, and insurance reaching that 85% minimum threshold would, would then be permitted to use cat modeling to project losses and include some portion of the reinsurance in rating. So that's the whole idea, that if the insurance does not reach the 85% minimum threshold, then no alarms for the use of cat modeling, which ensures, you know, to project losses and no allowances, to include some portion of reinsurance cost, because reinsurance is a bigger thing that, you know, insurance companies are struggling. So that, that's one of the things, we, this is so new that, you know, by the end of next year, we are hoping, like, we went from Safer From Wildfire, they were approved in October 2022, and we are approving, you know, we have approved Fair Plan, but we are approving other right now, so just taking time, so. But I'm excited that I'm introducing it right now, so then it is easier for everybody to take in and then know what's happening, so we keep on updating you as we move forward.
Okay, so maybe you don't know the answer to this yet, but as this is happening, as we're transitioning the 85% off the Fair and into the market, are they going to conceivably have more of a choice, or is there going to be a single provider, or potentially, could they be paying more? Do you have any idea on what that part looks like?
No, and I don't even have any idea on saying that this 85% thing will be happening soon. It's still in, in the process of regulations and achieving that, and then going through all the process and stuff. It's just a proposal that, you know, on government new stimulus, you know, request, and everybody looking into that. So it's, it's just, we are just talking about it and looking into all the things, but we will, we don't know how it will look like. It will be single insurance, you know, we have no answers for that.
Okay. And so anybody should, when they get their premium in the mail, or if they're going on Fair Plan, they should ask for their wildfire risk score, risk score? Is that any? Anybody should do that and understand what the risks are and what they could do? And then let's, can you walk through that process again, just so that we can be really clear on what that process looks like?
So people can already ask for their risk scores, you know? What Safer From Wildfire is, will do is, once Fair Plan, other approved it, that will give them, why did they get this risk score? So they can, if they feel it's not fair, they can appeal that. So that, that's how it is. So once, you know, remember the four things that I gave you, renew the policy, or you have done the update and you're submitting that, all that, when you do that part, at that time, you can ask for, or you can ask before, and accordingly, you can do the home hardening to your home.
One of the things that I have, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, and I asked this question during the presentation at CSAG too, is we have communities that are completely rebuilt to pretty much the latest standards, maybe the 2019, maybe 2020 building codes. So the homes are hardened, the community is hardened, and as long as everyone is managing the landscape, we don't have the forest that we used to have, then how, if that, those are all the things that we're supposed to be doing, and we've done them just by the nature of having to rebuild an entire community, then, you know, why do we have so many people on the Fair Plan? And why are the rates so high? So I, I've asked this question a bunch of times, or I've shared this frustration a bunch of times, and I, you know, I, I don't get a lot of really good answers, but I'm just gonna bring it up to you one more time.
And you know why there are not a really good answers? Because there is no good answer to that, okay? So Department of Insurance, we can do, once insurance companies are selling, we can regulate them. But in Department of Insurance, if you look at our CDI overview, we cannot push or force anybody to sell any insurance to anybody. So it is, like I said, today's presentation, I really wanted to come or also share that, look at the risk they are taking. So we are here all together. It's not that insurance companies are also in a pickle right now. So they are evaluating their risk and all that part, and that's what it is, but we cannot make them sell insurance.
Right.
Certain communities, certain people, or anything, we don't have the power, but once they are doing it, we can regulate.
Yeah, and that is, the answer that I typically get back is that the insurance companies, well, inflation is what's really causing a lot of these premiums to go up because replacement costs are so high.
Replacement costs, inflation, also, don't forget the risk that is involved now, is because of the, you know, wildfires and stuff, so. And we hear this a lot, like, there will be, and it's so heart-wrenching. A person will get, with the same everything, will get the insurance, and opposite home, which is rebuilt in, in the area where there was a fire and stuff, and they are not getting the insurance, but our hands are so tied, like, I said, we are not public utilities, so they have to make sure that they are making a decent profit. It's a profit industry, you know, they're making a decent profit, their risk is okay, and they're solvent, so few other, few things that they look at it, you know, which they don't feel profitable, so that's why.
Okay. Supervisor Smatier?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for coming back for further updates. I'm gonna follow up with some of the questions that were already asked. With this risk assessment, is there, I mean, I think I got the answer, but is there any type of enforcement to say, here's the risk assessment, you're, you're obviously not valuating the risk in the same way that the state is looking at the risk? What's the value of the risk assessment? If all it's going to tell me is what I can do to feel good about keeping my house safe, but not actually enforce a decrease or a fair pricing from an insurance company? What is the true purpose of the risk assessment, other than simply knowing my risk and what I can do to feel good about the safety of my home?
No. I think what it provides you, like we said, the transparency, and we give you the right of appeal, when you appeal the risk score, and accordingly, what is your risk, and accordingly, you will, you know, your code, your premium or thing should change. Department of Insurance is there. Like, if you go on the, I sent Johanna list of few FAQs of Safer From Wildfires and the discount, and accordingly, if you see what timeframe is that where you can require your risk score and stuff, if you feel it's not fair, then Department of Insurance, please call us or contact us, and we'll work through it, that how it is going and stuff, so.
And I know that this is not a California issue, this is a nationwide issue. Oftentimes, we'll talk to our state representatives, and they'll point to Florida to show that some similar situations are occurring there with insurance companies. I just, I guess I'm just gonna stand on my soapbox for just a split second. The idea of home ownership is a absolute critical pathway to help people get out of financial restrictions in their lives, in their lives. And when you purchase a house and you're trying to get out of financial restrictions, you're probably not gonna pay cash for your house, you're probably gonna get a mortgage. And upon getting a mortgage, you're forced to get insurance, and not to say that those who pay cash shouldn't get insurance, but that's a choice at that point that they have to deal with. But when you are starting at a lower level of financial status, you're going to get a mortgage, you're forced to get you're going to get a mortgage, you're forced to get insurance, which is now pushing people away from homeownership, which pushes away from people from financial freedom that house ownership is known to provide as an achievement for those folks. There's a lot of talk about equity and in trying to rebalance the scale of society to ensure that everyone has the same access and the same opportunities. And I see this as being an absolute weight on the wrong side of the scale of what California has been trying to do. And I hope that we can find a better way because this is not a sustainable way for us to keep going. As my colleagues stated, we have areas that are completely cleared, completely safe and yet unable without looking at the cost doubling, tripling, or just not even being eligible to obtain insurance. And on top of that, especially in a community with a lot of elderly folks who are on fixed income and going on their pensions or going on their social security, that huge increase and that value of homeownership when you are a senior citizen and trying to live out the rest of your years, you would expect to have a little bit more stability, but this creates an absolute huge instability in those lives and has a huge impact in our community. So I just at least wanted you to hear it. I'm sure it's not the first time you hear it, but we have to figure out something. This is just not a sustainable thing.
And I think that that's what, actually that was the catalyst with this SIS, you know, that came out, Sustainable Insurance Strategy. And it will just be like we will, you know, it's one of the things that we will try to work with it. But I totally hear you and it is heart wrenching for me and very sad for us as employees also when we go out and there are some times that we cannot do anything and homeowners has become such a, you know, hardship on people and especially our elderly and fixed income. I totally think that this is something I, we take, I don't think there is any presentation where we don't take this, you know. And one of the things that is on Commissioner's, you know, one of the things that he needs to work on and he is, wants to work on this.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation and the update. Do appreciate it. Just trying to refresh my memory from the last presentation. So Safer From Wildfires, I believe, envisions a, basically a new matrix of insurers that would be willing to consider fire hardening and other risk reduction procedures. And on that basis, on their understanding of a specific property, maybe offer discounts based on that home hardening or even be willing to write new policies with or without a discount. The last time you presented, I think I checked and there were no insurance companies signed up to provide Safer From Wildfire policies serving Lake County. So I guess my question is, has the insurance, have any insurance companies suddenly come to light and said, oh, absolutely, we want to participate in the Safer From Wildfire program? Because I think what I'm hearing my colleagues say is there is no advantage, no home hardening if there's no insurance companies that I can reach out to and actually negotiate some discounts or even negotiate new coverage. So has anything changed since the last update? Is, are there any Safer From Wildfire registered companies that are offering that type of discount in Lake County or in the state as a whole?
So I think maybe I did not present it in a simpler way that I should have. Last October 2022, the regulations were passed. By April this year, the insurance companies, they have submitted their rate plans and insurance Fair Plan. So Fair Plan was approved on August 23rd. They were already giving Firewise discount before, you know, since few years. Now they have added two more discounts, home, you know, surrounding and, you know, your surrounding and your home. So those are the two discounts that added. So now Fair Plan is offering. The other insurance companies are absolutely right. They are not doing it because they have submitted their plan and it's in the process of approval. So we are thinking by early next year, you will see some insurance companies, if they are willing to write in that area after that. So they have already submitted that, what discounts they will be doing. Each company will be doing it a little bit differently within the parameters of the regulation. But the companies have filed their rate filings. So we are hoping that we'll have something next year on that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And similar to that, Safer From Wildfire started then and now we are getting all the approval and things. Similar to this SIS is in, is in the process now, it's starting the process, you know, life cycle. So we are just going to update you as we move forward. I do want to, and I did not address Supervisor before, that I do want to say that if in doubt, first of all, my email is there and I will try to get the answer if I have the answer from our team. We have 1,400 people working at the Department of Insurance and lots of our experts in their own area and we can get the answer. But also Department of Insurance, our hotline is there and our callback time is two minutes. So for individual insurance things, I will encourage your constituents to call the department directly with their own policy and stuff.
Supervisor Swatier?
Yeah, just a quick question. I see this as being a larger issue in rural areas than urban areas. Do you have the percentage of who is on the Fair Plan when it comes to rural, suburban and urban?
I don't. I don't have it, but I can check on that part, you know. But I, I think that will be more of a thing for Fair Plan. All the data that we have, like I said, it's from 2021. So we don't have that data, but I can look into that, you know. If you can, if you can send this, you know, to Johanna and I can try to figure it out if we have it. I don't think we do, but I can look into that.
When, when did you say the 2022 data would be available?
Next year.
Early next year or late next year?
Yeah. Early next, we are thinking early next year.
Okay.
And just to speak to my colleagues here, I know there was a program that RCRC was trying to work on as far as the SJIP program where RCRC would front money to low income folks and then get reimbursed by the state for the money that they had set aside for SJIP because we were seeing that people with money who can purchase batteries for $10,000 or more were the only ones able to access this program, not those who are low income. So we saw SJIP program really facilitate assistance to those of affluence rather than those of the low income. I'd love to see something similar here because home hardening, you get a discount after you spend the money. I believe that's still the case, not you get money upfront to help you pay for those home hardensings, which leaves low income folks unable to even afford to start the process to home harden. I'd love to see if there's a similar program that can be created for home hardening so that we can help those that really do not have the opportunities or access to do those things.
That's what the pilot program is and that's what they're developing or we're developing that here with Kelseyville River. And it's, it's, you know, the pilot is three years and it's just starting. So there's not something faster that I'm aware of.
No, it's not. And then also when people are forming Firewise communities and stuff, I know there is a component of the insurance discount that's there. But home hardening has also made, Firewise communities has also made, as a community come together and Firewise community gets grants and all that part to help people home harden also. So I think that will be one of the things that probably you are developing for, you know, plan. Also, when people have that Firewise status, we will be very happy to write a letter of recommendation or any, any guide in that regard to help you get the grants, you know, to help home harden in your areas and stuff. So we are here for those recommendation letter also if you need some.
I think we're getting close to getting our 20th Firewise community in the county. So.
I isn't, and I honestly, I, that's exciting for me because I think we, we have 700 right now, which is really good, you know. And it also had bring community together in certain ways where elderly's were not communicating and stuff. And they now know somebody in the community care for them. So it's trending Firewise is basically a win-win situation, we feel.
Yeah. I mean, this is difficult because of the experience that we've all been through with fires. Our community goes above and beyond to do everything that is asked of them and we're still in this situation. So that's where our frustration lies is. You say to do all of these things, we do them, we have the Firewise, we, you know, and we're still in this place where most people are on the Fair Plan and are priced out of really what they can comfortably afford. So it's impacting so many of our community members.
I totally understand that and I'm hoping this, I do think that if you reach out to your insurance agent for Fair Plan, you know, Fair Plan agent, then with this new two, you know, discounts, maybe that will help little bit, you know, in that situation, depending where you are. We're trying to work hard at the department to do whatever we can, but it's a sticky situation.
Okay. Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, Mo Simon, District One Supervisor. Appreciate your time to be here for the update, but you know, I think I just have one simple question. Do you know anywhere in California under the Fair Plan or anywhere else? Obviously, Lake County being our one focus. All I hear about is cancellations, increasing on, you know, your monthly premiums or anything. I ain't never heard of anybody since August or any other time that anyone has gotten a discount from an insurance company or the Fair Plan. Do you, have you ever heard of it?
Yes.
How many? How many? If you say yes, don't just say yes because you want to say yes. Do you got a number?
I don't have a number, but I.
So then it's just a yes, you know.
No, 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 no.
I think you guys got to be able to advertise that because what we get here with boots on the ground, us as supervisors and, you know, a community that's gone through it over and over is those numbers. So, you know, I think if we're going to show up to a board of supervisors meeting, you have that number if you're going to say yes, because I haven't heard it. All I get is I got my cancellation notice or it tripled or we get the constant emails. And I appreciate your time here, you know. You know, and I got one more question that'll probably be controversial and whether or not you can answer it is if the California State Insurance Commissioner, does he have home insurance? And wildfire risk?
Can you say it again? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Does the Insurance Commissioner, does he have home insurance, home wildfire risk and insurance for his home?
I am not, I, I don't, I'm not privy to that.
I would bet it's a yes. But it's just frustrating and I know I appreciate your time today, but I haven't heard about it here in Lake County and I know a lot of people have done a lot of hard work and we've got a long ways to go. But I would appreciate it from you. As you said, you'd like to communicate with the board. You know, the first one in Lake County. And unless I, I'll ask any of my other supervisors if you've heard anything in a positive manner?
Supervisor, I'm going to interrupt you right now because you interrupted me twice on this part and I, I want to address this part. Yes, I don't have the numbers, but when I said yes, I meant yes, because we, we do receive a lot.
I just appreciate you following that up with some facts, like numbers.
It's okay. Next time we might, this is a very good suggestion and we will take that into account. But we do get those emails where people were able to get the discount. So I want to say that part, just because I don't have the number. I'm not just saying yes to say yes. And the thing about Commissioner having or not, I'm not privy to that. And you put me, put the word there that it means yes, it doesn't, I don't know that. So I want to clear that up before we move forward. Yes, go ahead.
So you know, people do get discounts. If you're in a Firewise neighborhood, you get a discount. It's very tiny. You know, if you, you have a 3% discount or even, I don't even know anybody that gets up to 5% off a $7,000 premium. It doesn't help a whole lot. So there are some very tiny.
I haven't heard any of that in any of the discussions I've had with anybody about the insurance. So I appreciate that if that's happening.
It's happening.
I'd like to, I'd like to see those numbers because I haven't heard that from any of my constituents or anyone else.
Well, we have so many, in District Five, there are so many Firewise neighborhoods. Several of the HOAs are, there are several in the Cobb area. There's one forming in the Kelseyville area and people are constantly trying to get their certification or the certificate that they can show their insurer. But I'm not sure that it's been happening for the Fair Plan yet.
Okay. And I want you to, Fair Plan approved August 23rd. From there, they are offering. So we do want people to connect with them. I do agree with you that it's discounts, even they're getting discounts. It's not the substantial, it's not something that we like to do. It's, you know, so I do agree with that.
Yeah, it's tiny.
Yes, I agree with that part, but it is there.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question on Safer From Wildfire. And some plans have been submitted for review. I guess, you know, glass half full. If we had some indication at this point that there was some traction with that and that we had a large number of insurers at least interested in kicking the tires on that, that may be helpful because what we saw on the slides here was basically the contraction of the insurance market and definitely a lot of effort that the Insurance Department has put forth in Safer From Wildfire. And I don't want to put you on the spot with this if you don't have the number, but can you tell us how many insurers have expressed interest in Safer From Wildfire? How many have actually submitted plans that they intend to participate in Safer From Wildfire and issue new policies under that program?
So basically, basically on our website, there is a place where you can see who has submitted the, you know, the rate filings and stuff. But I'm also hoping, it's end of this year, that even if I don't come to present, I'm hoping that early next year, I'm able to provide you the numbers, how many did and how many we approved. And I think I'm also taking, I'm appreciative of all the questions. And I'm also taking that I want to come up with more numbers and look into that when I, you know, come to you guys again. So that, that, that there is a part that you feel that it's moving forward. So thank you so much for that. But right now, I don't know on top, but I know there are lots of companies that, but lot doesn't do anything to. I want to wait on that and send you that information by early in next year.
I appreciate that, if only because for our own curiosity. When we hear on one side State Farm's pulling out, riding through, we could take some comfort if we knew State Farm, for example, had an application pending under Safer From Wildfires, that they are, they're on board with this new paradigm that you're trying to get. On the other hand, if we see a total absence of those large insurers and maybe some looky-loos, you know, kicking the tires on this, that would inspire a little bit less confidence. So I look forward to that future presentation and understanding how this future market you intend to mature is actually maturing or if there's challenges still on that.
Thank you so much and totally we want to do the same thing because Safer From Wildfire was one of the things that was put out and we are just moving along with it right now. Definitely, we want to have those numbers and we want to, all, exactly what you said, that we want to see where we can improve and how we can move this forward. Because communities are investing their time into it. Homeowners are working hard into it. So if they are not rewarded by that, that is very discouraging.
Yep, discouraging. Okay, I'm going to open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers that wishes to come up? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I'll close public input and see if there's any final comments. Supervisor Swatier?
Again, I appreciate the conversation and dealing with our frustration, but it is difficult because we're only talking about having insurance, let alone having insurance, going through a fire and trying to obtain the funding to be able to rebuild from those insurance. That's a whole different game to play after the fact. This is simply to have this almost thin veil of safety that we feel that we can have by having insurance. But the, I've heard too many stories of insurance, the length of time it takes, the number of hours, the full-time job it takes to be able to combat and get what you actually deserve in order to rebuild your lives. We haven't had that conversation today, nor will we. Um, nor will we, but it's just the whole insurance status of how it, it, um, it affects us is, is huge.
Couldn't agree with you more, more on that, because it's just, it is. And I will continue our work on it and we'll continue to update you on that, and we will continue to take. Suggestions from all of you and take it back and make it better as much as we can. Thank you so much for having. And happy holidays to all of you.
Yes, and thank you for coming back, and will we look forward to seeing you again in about six months?
Definitely, and also, um, if any questions that come up and that were not answered in the way, um, you know, we, feel free to send me. And, you know, last time also when we did, I will, uh, come back and I will get the answers, uh, whatever answer, however we can answer your, you know. We will do the, our best to give you the, whatever knowledge we have on those things.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, and maybe next time we'll have a little bit. More to report out on and be able to hear more about some progress being made. Um, hopefully we'll be able to see the twenty twenty two data and understand how this. Um, eighty-five percent migration off Fair Plan is actually gonna work, work out for our residents.
Definitely, eighty-five percent will take, I probably will take a longer time, but how many companies have filed, what, where we are, how we are headed. Definitely would love to come back and, um, you know, do that, but I do also want you all to also know that. It's just, it's not only Department of Insurance, we are all here in, together with homeowners and Department of Insurance and Firewise and. Insurance companies as well, what they are taking as loss and stuff too. So, um, so yeah, I will, um, do that, and I will also appreciate when I come next time if I can get. Questions, little bit more questions before, so I can, uh, put it in my T P, so my, uh, presentation is more, um, valuable to you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.